Welcome to the March 4th, 2025, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chambers. Please let the record reflect that all council members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. I'd like us to keep former city attorney Skip Warren and his family in our thoughts and prayers. Skip had been a city attorney, in the city attorney's office for over forty-one years. He and his wife Nancy just celebrated their sixty-eighth wedding anniversary in February. Skip served on numerous boards and commissions and served our city with distinction. So if we could keep his wife and children in our prayers. Thank you. Thank you. I would like to recognize a group called Skyrocket to Success, a youth development program, who toured the executive offices and the chamber. If you guys would stand up, and this is a number of students from middle and high school. Thank you so much for coming and showing an interest in civic life. We will stand for the pledge. Mr. Holston, if you would lead us?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, would you recognize our youth courier?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, our courier is Miles Jones. Miles is a graduate student at UNCG, where he's majoring in Peace and Conflict Studies. He also received his undergraduate degree from UNCG in Communications. Miles is a native of Radford, Virginia, and played his first two basketball seasons at Radford University before transferring to UNCG to join the basketball team. At six foot six, Miles is a defensive monster on the court. And a big, he is a big part of why the team finished second in the Southern Conference regular season. Miles will be interning in the city manager's office through the spring, and he just may be challenged to a game of basketball by the city manager to test that defense. But thank you for being with us tonight, Miles.
Please silence any and all electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the council chamber. The city of Greensboro strongly encourages resident input at our meetings. It is the goal of the city council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, individuals must sign up to speak by 6:00 P.M. If you have signed up to speak online, you must let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business agenda items with up to three minutes. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others since the speaker order is determined by the presiding officer. Depending on the number of speakers, council may adjust the time allocated for each person. Any handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. Speakers are expected to follow the rules of decorum. Any inappropriate behavior may result in removal from the meeting. Such removal will lead to an immediate three-month suspension from in-person participation. In cases of physical altercation, suspension period extends to twelve months, and criminal charges may apply for those who are suspended. Virtual participation via Zoom remains an option to preserve their right to free speech. Zoom participants shall not speak until they are called upon, but I don't believe we have any Zoom participants this evening. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they serve on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city on that particular item. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the presiding officer will announce the vote total. We have a consent agenda for items G1 through G7, which are regrouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what are believed to be routine and non-controversial items. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the next business meeting agenda. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. It has been requested by the applicant for council to remove item G1 from the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to remove G1. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We do have two ceremonial items on tonight's agenda. The first one is a resolution to honor the late Margaret P. Wingfield. Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you very much. I want to first say that Ms. Wingfield was a neighbor and a friend, but one of the oldest residents, being in her nineties over in District One. And we are sorry to have lost her, and she will definitely be missed. And her family is here, her granddaughter and them. So as I read and finish reading, you come to the podium and have a few words. Resolution honoring the late Margaret P. Wingfield. Whereas on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Greensboro lost a devoted member of our community with the passing of Margaret P. Wingfield. Whereas Mrs. Wingfield was born on May tenth, nineteen thirty-two, in Bahama, North Carolina, graduated from Little River High School in nineteen fifty-one, and moved to Raleigh to pursue a career in nursing. Whereas in nineteen fifty-four, she graduated from St. Agnes Hospital and Training School for Nursing, the first African-American nursing school in North Carolina, passed the state bar exam to become a registered nurse, started her career at L. Richardson Memorial Hospital in Greensboro Row, and worked in various departments over thirty-seven years, including operating room, medicine and surgery, labor and delivery, and as the charge nurse for the newborn nursery. Paper so hard apart these days. Whereas in November of nineteen seventy-one, Mrs. Wingfield was one of the founding members of the Sigma Chi chapter of Chi Edifice Sorority Incorporated, a professional nursing organization. Whereas Mrs. Wingfield transitioned to Evergreen Senior Healthcare System in nineteen ninety-one and worked there nine years until her retirement in two thousand. Whereas in retirement, Mrs. Wingfield continued to work as a registered nurse for various agencies, her family jokingly would say she helped deliver half of Greensboro as she assisted with countless births over her fifty-two-year nursing career. Whereas she was one of the founding members of Manasseh Baptist Church, served as deaconess president of the missionaries, and called the mother of the church, and was recognized in two thousand and six for her contribution to her church, receiving the Honoring Wisdom plaque from the Women's Ministry. Whereas a gifted baker, Mrs. Wingfield was known for her famous apple and pound cakes. She spent her time helping others in need, actively participating in volunteer work with her sorority chapter, including mobile meals and health fairs, and she will be remembered for her generosity and signature love taps. And now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Greensboro, that the city council wishes to express its sense of loss and offer its condolences and sincere appreciation for the many years of dedication to providing critical support and care for the community. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Margaret P. Wingfield as a symbol of the gratitude of the residents of the city of Greensboro for her contribution to healthcare community, adopted this fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five. And I would like to move the resolution. I don't see it on the screen, but I would like to move it. Thank you so very much. And so I will present this to her lovely family. But I would also like to say that Ms. Wingfield participated in the Neighborhood's National Night Out, and the only thing we ever asked her to bring was an apple cake. We didn't want her to do anything else, and she said, "I want to contribute." And we said, "Yeah, just bring the apple cake." And we're happy with that, and she did. And so that will be missed tremendously, but she was such a sweet lady, going to the Y up until probably, what, here recently? She was in the silver sneakers, exercising, something I need to follow and everything. So certain, an example for our community. And so thank you for sharing your mom and grandmom and family heart with us.
On behalf of the Wingfield family, I just want to thank Mayor Lawrence, County Woman Hightower, and the past. And Donna City Council, for honoring the legacy of my life for Mother Margaret P. Wingfield for her ninety-two years with this resolution. We were blessed to have her in our lives, and we are so delighted that she was able to be shared with others through our many works.
Our next item is a recognition of Twenty Twenty Four Shopper's Day.
Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your mic wasn't on.
Oh, okay. It's on now.
Yes.
All right. Well, hello. My name is Mary Olser, and I'm here with some others representing the Greensboro Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities, GMCPD. On December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, we hosted our thirty-ninth annual Shopper's Day event. This is our signature event, where we invite Guilford County public school systems and organizations that support individuals with disabilities to come to the Four Seasons Mall to celebrate individuality and inclusion, to learn from one another, and to implement life skills outside of the classroom. On Shopper's Day, attendees were able to partake in free refreshments, free gift wrapping, photos with Santa, entertainment, socialization, and networking with other individuals with disabilities in our community, and ten dollars' worth of shopping power. This year marked a huge milestone of the largest number of registered shoppers. We had one thousand four hundred and twenty shoppers. One hundred and seventy-seven volunteers, one hundred and ninety student volunteers, more than eighty city employees, including our police and our EMS. That is nearly double the number of shoppers and more volunteers than our previous year's events. These shoppers came to the Four Seasons Mall from twenty-five different organizations and twenty-seven different schools. Shopper's Day is an enormous collaboration across individuals and partners, and I would be remiss for not thanking them for their commitment to this event and for their contributions making this day a success. First, I want to thank our leadership team for their coordination efforts. Planning this event takes about six months and hundreds of email exchanges to bring all the moving parts and resources together. I want to recognize and thank Sharon Williams and Donna Gray for their tireless work in answering all these emails and coordinating all levels of the logistics. Many members of the leadership team that worked alongside Sharon and Donna also include city employees with the Parks and Recreation, special events, transportation, community relations, human rights, the police department, emergency medical services, and more. I give a heartfelt thank you to those planning members for supporting Shopper's Day in addition to their regular job duties. Second, I want to thank all of our volunteers. Without your critical support to greet attendees, check in the groups, serve food, wrap gifts, and shop with shoppers, this day would cease to exist. We appreciate you giving your time and talents to others. Third, I want to thank all of our donors and sponsors. Spanning from about September to December, we collected more than ten thousand dollars in sponsorship. These folks who provided financial support wanted to ensure that all registered attendees would have an equitable shopping experience while at the event. Additionally, I would be remiss to fail to mention the Transportation Department of Guilford County Schools, especially Ashley Albersen and the many bus drivers for the logistics involved in transporting our students to and from this event, which occurred within the constraints of their normal bus route obligations. I want to express my humble gratitude to all those who took part in believing in the vision of Shopper's Day and the amazing work that was done to continue the work that made it a reality for over fourteen hundred shoppers this year. Finally, I want to thank our amazing entertainers for volunteering to showcase their musical talents. Many of these groups continue to come back year after year to perform in the amphitheater, and they keep getting better. These groups include Peace Haven Community Farm,
Yes.
Chad and Middle School Ringing Rams, Guilford County Schools Death Education Program. And I also want to thank Danny Goldston and his family band Rain Down for volunteering their time to perform at this event. This family never fails to bring energy and life to the entertainment and to get everyone up and dancing, including Mary Kay Abuza-Water. Thank you, Mrs. Abuza-Water, for kicking off our event and with your welcome remarks and for participating in the joy of the day. We would now like to show a brief, two-and-a-half-minute showcase of the events. Oh, minute and a half, sorry.
You probably know that the foaming grease, or what we call fogs, should never be poured down any drain. Fogs create clogs in your pipes. But did you know fogs include more than just bacon grease and frying oils?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. It's always such a special event. Now we move on to our consent agenda. We did remove item G1, so it is G2 through G7. Do I have it moved by Mrs. Ferb, seconded by Mrs. Abuza-Water? Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
I'd like to move item I-7 to be our next agenda item.
Is any discussion? Then I think we can move that up. I know that you have to leave early, and you want to make sure that it's heard. So we'll move to item...
I-7.
I-7, which... I-7 is a resolution to authorize additional one million dollars to Community Renewal Corporation for sixteen thirty-two Ball Street multifamily development. I would ask staff to give us a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Here tonight to discuss the Solomon's Plaza Apartment Complex project. This is a project that faced a pretty significant interruption in its construction due to the COVID epidemic and the run-up in construction prices that happened in a, right after that time period. The address of this project is sixteen thirty-two Ball Street. It is located right up where US twenty-nine and Phillips Avenue come together. In that neighborhood, it's the site of a formerly demolished school building. The project is proposed as twenty-four three-bedroom, two-bathroom units, twelve-hundred-square-foot units at an affordability level of eighty percent of area median income, with rents at sixteen fifty per month. The city previously invested seven hundred thousand dollars in the site work and initial infrastructure related to this. Again, that was right before COVID interrupted the project. The developer, Trinity Consulting and Development, is requesting an additional one million dollars to be loaned to the related entity Community Renewal Corporation, which is a nonprofit corporation that was set up that can take advantage of better financing rates through the M&amp;F Bank, senior loan that is on, that would be on the project. Total investment by the city would be one point seven million, and that additional million dollars would come from the set aside of city ARP-enabled funds that council approved back in January. City staff has reviewed this project, and there were slight deviations from our underwriting standards, which we have brought with the approval tonight. Again, this is a small project in terms of our overall portfolio, and our guidelines are really written towards those larger projects. So when you condense it down to a smaller number of units, it's a little harder to meet some of those specific underwriting guidelines. And also, this project is attempting a full repayback of the city loan, which also makes it a little bit hard to meet those. They are very minor deviations from our guidelines. The city's term is a thirty-year loan with a half percent interest, and there's a senior lending loan from M&amp;F Bank of three point three million. MBE goals have been set on the project at eighteen percent MBE and fifteen percent WBE. And in order to assist the developer, the city is also working with PB and Business Capital in order to provide some technical assistance and capacity building and some additional project monitoring to help ensure that everybody gets what they need out of this project and the communication flows smoothly. The developer and representative from PB and C are here tonight. If there are any additional council questions.
I think we'd like to hear from them.
Okay.
Good evening. And you all, I left my hearing aids at home, so I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Is it on?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Good evening. I'm Theodore Stevens. We've been working at this project for a moment now, and we want to see if we can get this across the finish line. When we started back before the pandemic, we really had a very small budget, and the budget is still real tight right now. So the funds that we're asking the city for are really needed to make this project work.
Mr. Stevens, these are all three-bedroom units, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Which is something that will accommodate our family need as well, so.
Okay.
Anything else you want to?
I guess if we can all see it. This project is similar to one that we did back in early two thousand, two thousand sixteen, excuse me. And but this property is bigger than the original property that we started when we built the first one. So we're able to expand the buildings and make them a little bit bigger to make the footprint a little more appeasing and a little more appealing to the eye from the outside. But we've never skipped on the quality of what we built, because if you look at what we put in them, they're overbuilt, primarily for when you look at affordable housing.
About the management, correct? Questions about that?
And I...
The management.
Management, okay. And well, management, we have decided to use an outside management company. We managed it ourselves before, and it turned out pretty good. But when we start looking at more units than we've had, it takes a big commitment. So we have a management company that we've hired to manage this project. This project also, guys, can accommodate thirty more units, which we will go into the second phase of it after we've gotten this up and going.
Does your management company local?
Yes, they are.
And you are local? Can you expound upon that? I think sometimes our concern is that things get built, and then management is in another state, if you will. And then developers build it and leave. They don't live here. But you are local developers, so you will be here to make sure the project stays on track, stays on target, and maintains its aesthetics. And you're involved in it. You're involved in our community, so.
Yes. The management and my wife and son are handling that part of it. They are not here tonight. But I'll be stepping back from the project a little bit. I'll get it done until it is finished and get it up. My son will take over. My son will take over. He has a little more energy and a little more patience, and you may be finding him to be a little more easier to work with than myself. But the apple does not fall far from the tree, and I'm sure that he's going to take it on and do a wonderful job.
Thank you for hanging down there. You know, you and I had this discussion over two years ago.
Yes.
That you came down here and said what you needed to help finish this project, because it's in an area that really has not seen newer development in years. And so you said then what you needed. Sadly, it's taken us over two years to even get here. It shouldn't take that long, but the commitment that city has made to housing is attainable in areas that have been underserved and overlooked is something we have to continue to press forward. So I'm glad we've been able to make this work with the help of PBC. And if Mr. McKinney would want to expound on that as well.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. PMB Business Capital is excited to participate and, and work with the Solomon Plaza project to ensure that the inspections are full and complete, the work is done. And we're excited about the fact that the management company, the developer are local citizens here in the community. We don't have to worry about them completing the project and leaving. They're committed to this community. We're committed to this community. We're committed to this project. It's going to be a beautiful project. The aesthetics of this unit is going to have some beautiful on and on the outside, stuff that you'd see at a beach resort, quite frankly. And so it's going to be pleasing to the eye. It's going to give it a great look to the community, and we're excited about that.
I know this project has been, we've been working on it a long time. So I'm glad to see that we've come to this point, and, and the architectural renderings that I've seen will be an asset to district too, so.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that you all will vote for the project.
One, one final thing. Once we okay everything tonight, when, when, what is your timeline to start? Because I know that Wells is in her district, yes, and she's ready to see things come up out the ground, so am I.
Yes, of course.
Well, we had started on this project a couple of years ago, and the infrastructure's in. So all we have to do is go back and refresh a few things, and then we can get started within the next 30 days. We've already been approved for everything, so we're, we're right on target to get it done 30, 45 days.
Great.
With the spring season coming in and summer, there's going to be some great weather for us to keep the project moving along in expeditions manner, so.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, I just wanted to ask you, Mr. McKinney, how, when did you get involved? When did you invest, uh, business PMB Capital get involved in the project?
We, we started at the beginning of applying with the city, working with them at the very beginning stages, getting all the paperwork together, making sure we meet all of the city expectations. That's what I carry in this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do you want to move it now, second it?
I want to move, move that we accept, except, except nothing has to be real. No, I move that we, move that we accept the grant, the loan of $1 million to Solomon Place, Plas.
Seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to seeing it.
We're looking forward to seeing it come out the ground. We're excited. Can't wait to cut the ribbon.
We're so excited too. Thank you for your support. It's a beautiful project.
Thank you. It is beautiful. Thank you.
We now move on to our speakers from the floor portion of tonight's agenda. If Christina Lee and David Negron are here, if they would check in with the Courier. Our first three speakers will be Margaret Rowlett, McConan Howell, and Dominic Mercutio. If you would come to the window side of the room.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, Mayor Pro Tem Abuzawater, and the seven members of the council. My name is Margaret Rowlett, and I live at 808 Twickenham Drive in District 3. I'm here tonight on behalf of the group of local citizens who are actively opposing the proposed natural gas pipeline extension known as Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, part of which is scheduled to be built in our county. This project will increase the quantity of natural gas that is used to generate electricity on the grid that powers our city. Natural gas is comprised largely of methane, which is one of the most potent greenhouse gases. We are asking the city to oppose this pipeline extension. Yes, we are speaking with county officials too, and we will be at the county commissioners' meeting on Thursday. That said, we also want a resolution from the city of Greensboro. You previously committed to transition city operations to 100% renewable energy by 2040, and you approved a strategic energy plan in 2022. Very soon, the Office of Sustainability and Resilience will be releasing its annual report on the strategic energy plan. We will get an update on how well the city is doing in meeting its goals. In the plan, it states that changes to the grid generation mix can have the biggest impact on the city reaching its renewable energy goal. Increasing the amount of renewable energy on the grid means electricity purchased will generate lower greenhouse gas emissions and enable the city to meet its goal faster. On the same page, page nine, the city committed to advocating for renewable energy on the grid. Consistent with this commitment, in 2022, Mayor Vaughn signed a letter on behalf of the city that went to the North Carolina Utilities Commission regarding Duke Energy's Carbon Plan and advocating for renewable energy. Now is the time for you to take additional action in support of the city's strategic energy plan and oppose the proposed pipeline project. I've emailed each of you the draft resolution we're asking you to pass, and I also included a request for a meeting. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Abuzawater, for the time that you've already given to meeting with members of our group. We look forward to speaking with everyone else. And in addition to the county, we need you, our representatives here in the city of Greensboro, to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and everybody. First, I'm going to talk quickly about crypto and AI. America is heavily considering a Bitcoin and digital asset strategic reserve, like the gold reserve. Even if it does not pass, institutional adoption of crypto has been happening all over the globe well before the recent election. The world's largest investment firms, the world's largest banks, sovereign wealth funds, large company treasuries, pension funds, et cetera, are heavily involved in purchasing or offering Bitcoin and other digital assets. North Carolina is one of the 32 states that have, has a bill focused on adding Bitcoin and digital assets to their, and to its investment portfolio. Queen City News reports that both the governor and the Republican Speaker of the House are on board with it. I don't have time to talk about AI, yet I will say it's now a piece of national critical infrastructure. As you, currently, nation-states are in a crypto and AI tug-of-war that's a solid national security issue. Other countries are forming crypto reserves, and the current consensus is that eventually nation-state will vie against nation-state for the most Bitcoin. This nation-state versus nation-state reality also applies to dominance in the field of AI. So here's the punchline and why I'm here. Even with multi-trillion-dollar valuations and a powerful national security theme, crypto and AI has had three intractable problems that have existed for well over a decade. These three problems are reputation, use case, and adoption, in the consumer market, the retail market, and other markets. AI has a reputation, use case, and adoption problem. Bitcoin has a big reputation, use case, and adoption problem. And Web 3 has a gigantic reputation, use case, and adoption problem. With many obstacles in the way, I've been working on the project for over 10 years that goes very, that goes a very, very, very long way in solving this reputation, use case, and adoption problem in crypto and AI. The funny thing is that the project literally has nothing to do with crypto or AI. It simply utilizes crypto and AI in a highly differentiated way from anything else in the zeitgeist. In 2023 and earlier this year, I reached out to two council members, and having received a response, that's fine. I don't know the protocol, yet I would like to meet after the meeting in the hallway with maybe Zach Matheny or Counsel Hightower or the mayor or any council member, but of those three I would like to meet with. Thank you, that's time, right?
Thank you. After, after our next speaker, we have Sadie Blue, Rhonda Hopkins, and Beverly Ethels. If you would come to the window side of the room.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Dominic Mercutio, and I stand before you as a resident of the old Ashboro neighborhood and a representative of the old Ashboro Street Neighborhood Association. My wife and I moved here to this house in 2002, believing in its promise, its economic trajectory. We love its proximity to downtown Greensboro, access to the Greensway, Greenway, and beautiful green spaces like Douglas Park, Gateway Gardens, and Barbara Park. We just bought our first home, had our first child, who's now two years old. But today, I'm here to speak with urgency and frustration because of the promises that I see that still remain unfulfilled by the city. East Greensboro, including Old Ashboro, Arlington Park, Gurrell Street neighborhoods, and others, are a food desert. While the city approves incentives for large industries, basic needs like access to fresh food go unaddressed. What good are economic incentives if they do not improve the daily lives of the people living in Greensboro? Our sidewalks are crumbling. I live two blocks from Douglas Park, and I can't walk there safely with my son without walking in the road because the sidewalks are in a state of disrepair. Streetscaping efforts have stopped at MLK, serving as a visual reminder to every resident that the city's interests start and end there. Many of those improvements have descended into a state of disrepair, such as the Arlington Park signs, multiple lampposts along MLK, so on and so forth. Sewer infrastructure is in poor condition, leading to persistent backups and blockages. Even more disheartening is the city's failure to follow through on its own commitments. The Old Ashboro Development Plan adopted in 2004, over 20 years ago, including the development of the A2, A3, and A4 lots, yet these remain empty 20 years later. The inaction, this inaction has contributed directly to the lack of housing density that grocery stores are consistently citing as a reason for not investing in our community. This is a problem the city could have solved had it honored this plan over the last 20 years. More recently, developers planning the South Elm and Gate City site have engaged grocery stores and received clear feedback. Housing density and median income levels are barriers to their desire to be in our neighborhood. This feedback is invaluable, yet the city continues to take a reactive approach rather than a proactive approach. We cannot simply wait for the market to correct itself. The city must invest in housing and infrastructure to create the conditions necessary for businesses, including grocery stores, to recognize East Greensboro's, East Greensboro's potential. I speak today not just as an advocate, but as a neighbor. The people of Old Ashboro and the surrounding communities have dreams, families, and a deep love for their community. They deserve what every Greensboro resident deserves: safe streets, clean water, and access to essential resources. Yet these basic needs remain largely unmet in large parts of East Greensboro. To be clear, this is not just about a grocery store. I recognize the potential in plans the cities made, like the Eastgate City Boulevard Plan and the Windsor Chavis Nocho Community Complex, but it's not enough. The residents of Old Ashboro and East Greensboro deserve more than promises and plans. They deserve action and follow-through. We're asking you for engagement, meaningful partnership. We're asking you to see us, hear us, and work to build the community that we see and the potential we see. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sadie Blue, and I am pleased to be present and celebrate with the Poplar Ridge community that through cooperation of residents, Habitat for Humanity, and the city of Greensboro that their crawl spaces are remediated, under their homes are totally safe and dry, could even be used for refuge if deemed necessary, and many have received additional repairs such as new gutters, new steps, porch repairs, and inside floor repairs. Secondly, I am here to thank you and those of you who entrusted me to do this work, with a special thanks to Councilwoman Sharon Hightower, Councilman Hugh Holston, and to Ms. April Albretten. To those of you who have been the voice of wisdom and reason and continue to encourage residents to stay the course, I would like to say thank you. I celebrate that Habitat has put on the coat of responsibility and has taken it on to make sure that we ensure that in spite of our differences, that these residents live in a home where mold and mildew are no longer the culprit of some of the health challenges that people were facing. Lastly, I celebrate the unity and the strength of the Poplar Ridge community. Through frustration, tears, and disappointments, this community has taken the challenge and used it as fuel for change, and not just for their homes, but how they support each other in their community. I would lastly also say, although we have a long ways to go, with your help and the cooperation of all, we've come a long way. Thank you.
My name is Beverly, good evening. My name is Beverly Ethels-Williams. I live at Nine Dan Hughes Court in Poplar Ridge. I've been there since December 19th of 1996. And so it's like been 27 years, and as, you know, as you probably get older, things happen, you know? So I didn't even know that we would be able to, Habitat would be able to help us because we had been there, we thought everything was going to go for, you know, we had to pay it for ourselves. But it's so, I just want to give thanks to Habitat, came to give out support to them. We went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth with different contracts, different things, what we wanted, what they wanted, what they couldn't do, what we wanted them to do, and they found, made us an offer we couldn't refuse. So they came out, they gave my crawl space, and even it looked so good. My grandbaby said, Grandma, all I need is a blanket, and I can stay, I can stay up under here. He said, I don't even want to come out. So it's real nice. I got the crawl space, got the insulated door, got new gutters. They even put the pipes in the ground and draw the water away from the house. They came out multiple times to come out and inspect, to make sure everything was right, to make sure we were satisfied. PMI came out more than one time, Habitat's come out more than one time, and they, they still checking with us to make sure we're satisfied. So I just want to say thank you all for y'all's support, and I came out to support Habitat. Thank you.
After our next speaker, we have Deana Hayes-Green, Monica Walker, and Eric Robert.
My name is Rhonda Hopkins, and I'm at Five Dan Hughes Court. I would like to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak tonight. We would like to thank Keisha Dockery, who started this. She began this journey for us. I want to thank Ms. Sadie Blue for standing with us and being an operator for both groups. And I would like to take this time to thank David, the CEO of Habitat for Humanity Greater Greensboro, for being the man, for being a man of his word. He let us know, city councilwoman at large, Evony Johnson, that told him that, pulled him aside and told him that he needed to build back the trust of the Poplar Ridge community, and David has done just that. David has become such a friend to me. David has become such a friend to me. And I thank God that he put David in my life. He makes sure that everything is done to satisfaction with the Poplar Ridge community. He hasn't let us out in the cold. But nobody will ever know how much this meant to us to have our houses fixed. And he fixed sixty-two of the sixty-seven houses in the Poplar Ridge neighborhood, which is, which is great and wonderful. Even with things going on, if some people didn't meet the deadline, he saw to it that they were able to get their houses fixed. He did porches that were damaged by the water, which he didn't have to do. He could have just come in and let PMI fix our crawl spaces. He made sure that the water was running away from the houses. They are coming back to do the swales. And for that reason, we would like to ask city council to release half of the money to Habitat that is being held so that David can finish up the work in the neighborhood with the swales. And this is my friend David. I thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and city council members. My name is Deana Hayes-Green, and I stand before you tonight not just as a resident, but as a co-founder of the Goral Street Neighborhood Association, a former board member of the Old Ashboro Street Neighborhood Association and co-founder of Black Wall Street, which is a community redevelopment effort to restore and transform a community that has long been racially divested. I live on what was once called the Color Line. It's a street that legally divided black and white communities. My home is known in our neighborhood as the William Windsor House. Windsor Center is named after William Windsor. And it carries a painful history of systemic racial exclusion. In nineteen thirteen, William Windsor, a black man, purchased his home on what was then considered the white side of the street. When his white neighbors learned of this, they didn't just complain, they went to the city attorney. Not you. Within twenty-four hours, Greensboro, within twenty-four hours, Greensboro adopted a segregation ordinance modeled after Winston-Salem's, forcing Mr. Windsor to sell his home at a loss and move across the Color Line to Ash Street. This isn't just history, it's the foundation of our reality today. From nineteen fourteen to nineteen twenty-nine, Greensboro had laws prohibiting black residents from living on majority-white streets. But zoning ordinances and other discriminatory policies never ended, they just evolved. The construction of US twenty-nine, public housing projects displaced thriving black communities. The highways, industrial zones, and neglected infrastructure didn't just divide our neighborhoods. They walled us in, cutting us off from investment and opportunity, and those effects are still with us today. The legacy of redlining means that neighborhoods like mine, off of Gate City Boulevard and Goral Street, are still trapped in a cycle of underdevelopment, divestment, and neglect. When white residents left for suburbs like Irving Park, Fisher Park, and Hamilton Forest, they took businesses, churches, and infrastructure investment with them. Meanwhile, my community and many others were left behind, ignored, underserved, and forgotten. And the cost of that neglect is not just economic, it really is life and death. There's a fifteen-year life expectancy gap between my census tract and Latham Park. Fifteen years. People die in my neighborhood fifteen years earlier than just a few miles away. Why? Because opportunity, because my community is a desert of every kind. Food, healthcare, housing, and economic opportunity. Our development plans have been delayed, disregarded, and dismissed for decades, and we are here to tell you, no more. We refuse to accept continued neglect. We pay taxes, we raise our family, and we make positive contributions to the city. And tonight, we're demanding that you do your jobs. Not just for the neighborhoods that have always had your attention, but for the communities that have suffered under your inaction. The city has failed to repair the damage it has done to our community, and that failure has consequences, and those consequences are killing us. We're demanding action, not empty promises, not more studies, not more delays. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Robert, eight-one-six South Elm. Did you know that it took six months after the original seating for people of color to actually be served at the lunch counter? Well, now, sixty-five years later, seven historically redlined neighborhoods, my community, is still waiting to be served. While we can all now sit in most restaurants, we still can get access to fresh food or even the good stuff. What we can get access to is polluted parks, plenty of land for landfill, Dollar General, and now a parking lot for Zimmerman. We didn't get the baseball stadium because we were on the wrong side of town. We did not get the windmill because we were too black. We didn't get the performing arts center because Greensboro's elite wanted it on the white side of town. And now we can get a grocery store because we are too poor or because one of Matheny's friends, he is throwing a tantrum demanding parking for one of his tenants, Centric Brand. Which is worth noting that in, it is rumored that one of the latest treaties that was signed only a few months ago, Zimmerman actually removed parking for Centric on his own land, forcing him into the public parking lot that you own. Only in Greensboro and nowhere in the ethical world, world, would Matheny, a man who somehow runs a taxpayer-funded nonprofit while holding public office, stand in the middle of seven neighborhoods that have been starved of investment for decades and argue that what we really need there is a parking lot or a taxpayer-funded makerspace. He sure has grandiose plans for the former news and record site, but the best he will support for us is a surface parking lot for one man, his friend. Matheny gets paid to serve the people and claims to care about economic growth. Yes, he stands in the way of a grocery store that would serve downtown residents, downtown businesses, and all surrounding communities. This isn't just a conflict of interest, it's a conflict of logic. It's a conflict of the heart. And I think you know this as institutional and racism. You spent forty-three million dollars on a former Greenway, which no one knew, at least not on my side. And I would know because I actually live on it. You have issued giving Zimmerman millions in graft and more millions in free parking. You gave Deep Roots and other grocery store two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and yet there's nothing for our side, just like Zimmerman's doggy bag. What Matheny and Zimmerman are doing is simply wrong. It isn't just unethical, it isn't just corrupt, it is generational exploitation. And let's be honest with ourselves, Zimmerman and Matheny could not care less about the well-being of my community, the greater good, or downtown for that matter. Matheny simply wants to keep his job and act like a big man, and Zimmerman is only too happy to use him to get what he wants at the expense of my community. Thank you.
Y'all want to debate? All right. Well, I'm just, all right, well, I'm gonna get started then. Good evening, members of the council. I came today not just to talk about a grocery store, but about something much bigger: systemic corruption, conflicts of interest, and a complete disregard for the needs of the very people you all were elected to serve. Because in fact, you were elected to serve, not just keep your seats warm. The issue at hand isn't just about whether or not a grocery store gets built. It's about who gets prioritized in this city and who's left behind. It's about how public resources are consistently funneled toward wealthy developers and political insiders, while basic necessities like access to fresh food are treated as an afterthought. It's about the residents who don't have the privilege of being in Zach Matheny's inner circle, people like Robbie Perkins and many others who see firsthand how decisions are made behind closed doors. This, in fact, is about transparency. It's about accountability. It's about the growing divide between those who have power and those who are simply trying to survive in a city that too often ignores their needs, that you all. So no, this isn't just about a grocery store. It's about a pattern of behavior that prioritizes corporate interest over community well-being. And if that doesn't concern you, if that doesn't bother you, then you're not paying attention, or you're obviously just playing along.
Madam Mayor, can I just make a comment real quick, or maybe a few? And Mr. Turner, you'll probably have to review that tape, the derogatory language that was used about me. I was a little concerned that the term racist was used, corrupt, and everything. I find it ironic, talking about neighborhoods, that, you know, I know it took a while, but Mr. Robert sold his house in Summerfield and bought a house at the lake at High Rock. Transparency. There is not one document in the world that says anything about me stopping a grocery store. The second breath is there's not one document that Mr. Robert opened his property up at the mill and had a food market to do something about a food desert. I will commend Ms. Deana Hayes-Green on what she's done on her neighborhood. I also find it very, if we're gonna be transparent, systematic corruption and being in the alleged pocket of a developer. Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, could you do me a favor for this council? Could you please do research on the public dollars that Monsieur Robert has received from the city of Greensboro? And as I recall, counting the patio beside the property in South Elm, that he's received over five-hundred-thousand dollars of taxpayer funds. If we're gonna be transparent, let's be transparent. There is no documentation of any sort. As a matter of fact, I attempted to go to a neighborhood meeting that I was at one point invited, at the Nettie Code Building. And I was invited, but when I got there, I was uninvited.
No.
That's fair. As a matter of fact, if anybody wants to do a public records request, I'm happy to send you the email from Ms. Parker and the neighborhood stating it.
We can't have side conversations.
So I'm happy to share that with the media or whoever would like it. And when I walked in the meeting, Hugh, Sharon, Tammy.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop yelling out, or we'll have to have you removed again.
I think you should probably be removed anyway. Because the fact of the matter is, again, I think that's a three-month ban, maybe six. There's your year. So again, ladies and gentlemen, and I hope there's millions watching. If you want to talk about transparency and accountability, let's talk about it. We just talked about an incentive for who, Ms. Hightower? Was it a big political corporation, or was it a small minority-owned business that's doing quality housing? So we're not just doling out money to a bunch of corporations. By the way, corporations that could hire folks and try to get the average minimum wage and the income per capita up. Folks, let's talk about transparency. Because I could keep going, and I've got to file that thick of some of the folks that spoke tonight and the hatred that they spewed. But the fact of the matter is, I know my heart's in the right place. My kids know my heart's in the right place. I think this council knows that my heart's in the right place because I've proved it. Let's work together, leave the hatred, leave the vitriol somewhere else. And if we want a grocery store, how about we do the opposite of what they did at Hobbs and Friendly? And let's pull the neighborhood together, and let's lobby every grocery store in America to come locate here. How about that? Let's do that. And how about, don't kick somebody out of a room when they're trying to be your partner. How about that?
Crystal, please, please, or I'm gonna have to ask.
I'll stop. I'll bring my file next time, because at this point, I've dedicated my life to this community, and I don't need to sit here and take some crap from anybody that tries to tell me otherwise. Because I got some other things that I can say. Again, Ms. Green, congratulations. My girlfriend rode by your house and said, that's a beautiful house, you should go make sure you go by and see it. And I said, that's the Greens' house. Thank you for what you're doing for your neighborhood.
I, I just want to make one comment about grocery stores and, and where they go. When Bailey Village was being built, they put some property aside for a grocery store, and they were gonna rough it out, and it is still there. And Chancellor Martin, Chancellor Harold Martin and I wrote letters and called on most of the large grocery stores. We even went to our, to our local grocer, The Fresh Market, to see if they would do a boutique hotel. We reached out to Trader Joe's because they, we thought that would be a great place for them to go. We did the usual, the Harris Teeter and the Food Lion and everybody else. This was a brand-new, this was a brand-new facility in a new apartment complex right across the street from a major college. We could not get one commitment. Nobody even came out to see the spot. So saying, let's get a grocery store, it's not easy. Because I'm telling you, when Bailey Village was being built, we tried really hard to make sure that there would be fresh food right across the street from North Carolina A&amp;T and in Bailey Village.
Well, and I'd like to add to that, May, if I may. That's one of the reasons that we now have looked at having retail incentives to bring in grocery stores, to make it, just like we incentivize economic development. We now working with our Economic Development Department and Retail Strategists to look at how can we incentivize them coming to an area. Because I live in that food desert too, so I understand the dilemma. But I've gotten the same argument for years. You don't have the rooftops, and under the rooftops, you don't have the money. And so now we know that we've seen, what, we make twenty-six thousand dollars, Goldie? Because they brought up where others make forty-four, we don't have the income. So we gotta do some incentives to get people to see us and hear us and serve us. So I, I understand your concern, I do. And we gotta work together on this thing to make it happen.
And I've, I've heard this, and I guess I've been by my, my constituents thinking that I wasn't concerned and not concerned. But I think because of the experience that I've had, in nineteen ninety-eight, when our grocery store was closed on Phillips Avenue, we wrote all over the country. I wrote to everybody I could find, one of the basketball players. They said he would invest in communities. I wrote to him, they have a set of criteria that is just out of this world. How many stoplights, how many cars, how many beds, how many people you have in the community? They have a list that's not like a regular, just like a regular store. So it, it's hard. It is hard. And don't think that nobody has tried. And we're still working right now, trying to get a grocery store on the corner of Dudley and East, East Market Street. Yeah, we're actively talking to someone now, but it's, it's difficult. It really is. So I hope you won't think that nobody's concerned, and I can understand what he's saying because he's being directly attacked. But I know you think I'm passive because I haven't done it. But I, that experience, and I know, but we're still working on it. Goldie, I'm working.
Goldie, can I ask you a question? A few years ago, there was a redevelopment in District Two, off, I think it's called Phillips Avenue.
Yes.
Who helped you with that?
The person, the person that told me about someone who could help on Phillips Avenue. Once the, the store left and the, the shopping center was just in disrepair. And I was, I remembered vividly, I was on my way to a funeral in Fayetteville, and I got a call from Zach. And Zach said, Goldie, I think I've found somebody that could help you with the project. And I called him. It was self-help. And they, when we went to talk to them, we had to talk strong, give them a strong story. But they stuck with us, and they rebuilt that shopping center. But yes, you told me, and I contacted them.
And, and let's not forget, the city invested in that shopping center. And let's not forget, the city invested in that shopping center over $2 million.
The city really invested in us. But we had to, we had to find someone that was willing to do that construction.
Ms. Crawford?
Okay. So, yeah. Let me change this a little bit, because what I heard is the same thing that we have heard for quite some time. So, let me take you back. In the '60s, my grandparents moved over on Pearson Street. Now, people were asking for better food back then and for a grocery store, all of those good things. In the '70s, the city opened up lots on Bimbo and off of Garrel Street, where we built our house on High Street. It was supposed to be called Old L. Richardson. It was something like Washington Heights. It was supposed to have a swimming pool and a grocery store, like, you know, the developments across town. If you've driven through my neighborhood, it doesn't look like anything that we were promised. I'm a lifelong member of my neighborhood. And I remember getting on the bus to go to Friendly to get groceries. I am 53 years old. How long is that that we haven't had a grocery store? So, we live in a city that prides itself on growth, opportunity and quality of life. We are not taking part in that quality of life. A basic necessity is the access to fresh and affordable food. Right now, families in my community have to travel the same miles to go get groceries. And we don't have a choice. We have to eat cheap food or fast food. That's what's close, if you don't have transportation. That's the closest in walking distance, right? It's not just an inconvenience, it's a public health crisis. Studies show that food deserts lead to higher rates of diabetes, heart disease, and childhood obesity. And so, when fresh food is out of reach, entire communities suffer. We pay more for healthcare because we don't have the infrastructure that we need. And yet, we are getting more affordable housing in neighborhoods that cannot support it. So, I don't, I hear the, my feelings are hurt. But guess what? We're pissed off. We are tired. And our feelings are hurt for being neglected for decades. So, the good news is, we do have a solution. The solution is a full-service grocery store, hopefully at Elm and Gate City, that not only provides essential goods, but creates jobs, supports local farmers, and boosts small businesses in our area. This is an investment that would pay off for generations. So, we need the city's support to make this a reality. Keep looking.
Thank you. After our next speaker, we have Scott Jones, Crystal Black, and Sheryl McIver. If you could come to the window side of the room.
Can I start? Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Hayes-Bell. I'm a member of the Garrel Street Neighborhood Association. Tonight, several of our residents of Southeast Greensboro community will stand before you to recount the decades of broken promises and unfilled plans that were supposedly meant to uplift our neighborhoods. We will invoke the names of Nettie Code and Dorothy Brown and so many others who have passed on while waiting for your commitments to become reality. They sit at this very podium voicing the same concerns we bring before you today: abandoned properties, vacant and unattended lots, crumbling infrastructure and inadequate housing, a lack of quality retail, and many more. As we speak, there will be some people who will act. There will be some of you who will sit unbothered. And there will be some of you who will tell us that we're being unreasonable and that you're doing your best. The truth is, we have been far too respectful, far too patient, and far too understanding. And maybe that's the problem. We leave these meetings believing that we have been heard, trusting that at least some of you will take action. But too few of you will vote and hold yourselves accountable. We heard that your hearts are in the right place, but we want to see it in your vote. We see where the city's investments go. We know because those are the neighborhoods that we are forced to shop in, to access food, entertainment, and basic amenities that we deserve in our own community. Time and time again, the city has neglected its responsibility to Southeast Greensboro. Let me be clear. We will not stop showing up. Again and again, we will demand action until real change happens. We will make it impossible for you to ignore our voices. And truly sad, and the truly sad and irrational reality is this: investing in every part of Greensboro strengthens the entire city. You cannot claim to care about Greensboro and Greensboro's future while continuing to neglect entire communities. Is there no shame on this council? Thank you.
I don't even know where to start. Good evening. I'm shocked and amazed at these speakers and council members. As a resident who was born in Moses Cone, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of standing here. I remember driving an armored car when it was Food Lion on Phillips Avenue when I graduated high school. I remember the grocery store out there. Our Hope Center serves individuals experiencing homelessness poverty every day. Six days a week. I have families with kids, adults, seniors that come in there every day. 50-plus every day, up to 70, 80 on Saturdays, looking for a hot meal. Some homeless, some just living in poverty in East Greensboro. I'm getting it because I'm listening to the crowd out here. And y'all guys got a hard job to do. And you know I'm critical of you. Every one of you's heard from me. You know I'm critical of you. But we're not working together. This is not what I came up here to talk about. This is really not. I've given you a packet of our proposal for our Freeman Mill Road project. We're moving forward. The next step is a sketch plan review for affordable housing, 25 units of affordable housing. But I can guarantee it won't cost $5 million. This will be for seniors and veterans experiencing homelessness. This will have a community garden, a lot of open space on the property. And we don't have to ask for rezoning because we're going to zone under the current residential zoning. So, we're not going to have to ask for permission. We're just trying to inform you of what we're planning to do. We're working with A&amp;T students on this. We will work with other nonprofit builders as well with this project. It won't just be built by Tiny House Community Development. I just hope you will consider this plan, keep an open mind, open heart, not concerned about my being critical of you in the past. Support the Hope Center because we're asking for funding for the Hope Center, and we're going to be asking money for this project as well. I'm hard. I'm critical. I'm straightforward. It's about passion, compassion, and it's not arrogant. It may come across as me being arrogant, but it's not. It's the passion I have to serve this community here in Greensboro, East Greensboro to be exact, Southeast Greensboro. I don't do this for me. I get paid $32,000 a year. You think I can stay at this nonprofit for that? No. I'm here because I love it. And I tell them that every day. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. I too am disappointed by just the display that I've seen tonight. And I would like to say on my behalf that if you hear a female voice coming from that side of the room, it may not be me. So, I want to stand corrected. When I was corrected, it was not me that made the comments. I did make a comment, but it was assumed that everything you heard on that side was coming from me. So, I also am concerned at council just kind of being able to speak when we are allowed public comment. Zack, we have had conversations, but I think that some of the pushback comes from the fact that we don't have to showcase conversations. I think we need to have deeper conversations off the record because it just, the same way that you're speaking about people attacking you, you're attacking us. And that's the way it feels. So, if you want to make that change, let's change that narrative a little bit because that didn't look good. It really didn't. And I hope that we can correct that off-record. But, you know, I'm happy to be here at the table to address it personally and publicly. But I would say that I wasn't impressed with council either. I'm going to get to a short statement that I was going to say. But we're here tonight to let council know that we are organizing. This organizing will be across the east, encompassing multiple communities as many residents that have been impacted by the negative decisions made by present and past council are no longer tolerated. So, we want it to be understood that this is the beginning of what you will hear at future council meetings. Doesn't feel good, I know, Ms. Hoffman, but it's happening. It's happening. We are no longer accepting the status quo practices of planning and zoning departments and commissions. We know why we don't get grocery stores. It's because you keep approving affordable housing in District 2. It's because you keep approving the same price points of housing. They'll never get a grocery store. And the quote of "it takes time," we're done with it taking time. We're done with the time-taking. We are organizing. This is a voting year. Some of you need to be concerned. Very concerned. We are no longer accepting hot dogs at the cookout or you showing up for photo ops. That is not happening anymore. Not happening. You cannot cheese in our pictures and then vote against us. Again, this is just the beginning. It's not over. We are advocating for underserved communities. And if it takes a small force to do that, to support people, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. After the next speaker, we have Malik Hugh, Mary Morgan, and Brett Tanis. Those are the only speakers I have, those are, those are the only speakers that I have signed up. If I've missed somebody, please see the courier. Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Crystal said a lot. I would be much milder. I think, oh, I have to get my name again. Oh, Sheryl McIver. I think the last two council meetings, not only from the public, but also maybe from the stand, there's been probably more tension than it needs to be with developers feeling like they can just speak to someone anyway, any kind of way, even though you couldn't see it on camera. It did happen. And I want to address the rest of that. But I will say that I did some research for low-income tax housing credits, just the LITHC. And from 1987 to 2022, 78% of those approvals went in three ZIP codes: 27406, 270, 27405, and 27401. From 2007 to 2022, just, I'm just speaking of LIHTC. Just want to be clear. 71% of approvals for Greensboro went in three ZIP codes: 27406, 27405, 27401. If publics can come in and the city and county can approve about $38 million in property tax reductions, then I think there's opportunity for a consumer use agreement of some sort where they land some of that property tax. We pay taxes. Then they can land in some of, somewhere where there's a food desert. I understand, and we've heard all of the feedback about the complications. But if they can take from us, and yes, they're going to bring jobs, but they can also give us a benefit. They may not line their pocket profits as much as they want, but I think there's some consumer use agreements that may be out there that maybe we can bring them back to the table. We've added more rooftops. That's what you guys said, right? We've added four more affordable housing rooftops. Not, I mean, community, apartment buildings, however you want to say it. So, bring them back to the table. Let's see what they say now. Is it the same conversation? We said rooftops. We got rooftops. Let's hear what they have to say. Thank you.
We do have two additional speakers, Monica Walker and William King.
Hello, city council. I'm back again. My name's Malik Huff. I'm back. As y'all got on y'all desk, right in front of y'all. My Beauty in the Streets paper, I did finally get it. I had got it this morning. So, I wanted to bring that into y'all. As y'all see on your slide, I do got a little bit of stuff for y'all to see. Again, I brought back the same slide again, but this time it's the same thing, but it's on the food. And my people need food and clothes. We're trying to get more food, more clothes, more stuff. I'm trying to get vans. I'm trying to get a kitchen donated to me so that way I can be out here feeding my community, feeding my homeless communities, feeding them, showing them, doing hair for them in the streets. As y'all see, I got the package so that way y'all can see what I'm really trying to come out here and do to change my streets. Because sooner or later, I'm trying to get a building so that way I can have one location for everybody to be in. So that everybody can be in that one location so that way everybody just won't have to. All the nonprofits can come and just be up under one place instead of us having to go this spot, this spot, and feed and feed every day. So, I'm just asking, that's why I went to the Secretary of State, called them this morning. They emailed me over my paperwork so that way y'all could see what I'm planning to do for the streets. Beauty in the Streets is a cause that I came up with from a lady in Skid Row in California. So, I brought it to Greensboro for a change to do it. So, I brought Beauty in the Streets for a reason, for a season, everything. Y'all can see on the screen, I got, where I've been feeding them so much. So, I'm back again on it. So, then, I'm also like, I want to help my community. I want to help feed my community, show my community some love, show them feedback and everything. I'm just trying to make my city to be where it can be. Downtown also, city manager, if you could look into this and get back with me on some things that I need you to look at from the GPD side of it. I've been hearing a lot of things that police have been trying to do, a lot of things to our, to our own homeless community members. And I just need the questions to be answered so that way I can know what to talk back to my community. Because we've been having a lot of discussions. We've been having a lot of hearings. So, city, I would ask for y'all, city council, to help me and look into some of the things that I've been asking. And I have brought it together. So, I have brought this. I'm bringing food, clothes, hair, all that. I'm trying to do a nonprofit that's coming. And I just wanted to come, bring it to my city this time with the paperwork that I had got. I'm trying to expand my horizon around city of Greensboro. But it was the way that, you already know, because you've been out there. You done seen me out there. I've been in the action. I've been out there trying to feed the homeless. We've even given them, but out of my own money, I had to go and buy that, the biscuits right here in the bag and the orange juice. I bought that with my own money. I bought 50 biscuits. And I had to go back, and I had to do that. And I want everything to be done. I want y'all to help me and come out and support. Who hosting? You came. You did it. You done seen some of the stuff that I've been doing too. Zack, you been out there. You done seen a lot of what's going on. So, I've been out here since 2017. And now, that 2017 came around, July 27, 2019, I got beat up downtown Greensboro. I've been asking for a lot of things to be reviewed to stop a lot of the homeless members from beating on people like me. Thank y'all.
Can y'all hear me? Yeah, okay. Community, defined as a feeling of fellowship with others. If you could give us your name for the record. Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Morgan. Community is defined as a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing. Community is defined as a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. To me, this means sharing the benefits and the burdens with one another. Unfortunately, the planners of our city would disagree, as shown by the evidence put forth by me now. We are only as strong as our weakest link. Out of 28 zip codes assigned to this city, only six of these zip codes have the load of affordable housing. It is high time that affordable housing be built in the other 22 zip codes. Isn't the idea behind affordable housing to have accessibility to all parts of the city, not just the haves or the have-nots? Where I currently live, there is affordable housing units within a half-mile of my home, two of them. Now there are plans to put two more within that half-mile radius. I could spit and hit each one of those. So with that said, the city is ready to lower the tax base around my home, which is detrimental to my home values, and will drive businesses away because the taxes go down. I think that we're trying to work on Randallman Road and clean it up. This is not the way to do it. You cannot continue to load affordable housing into already overburdened areas. We gotta stop using the same tired six zip codes and start building in the other 22 untried zip codes. I know that there is a "not my backyard" feeling, everybody gets it, but I think that my area has given enough. On another note, I'm for the pipeline. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Brett Tanis. I've been here now one year and one day in Greensboro. My remarks today are directed at Madam Mayor and the City Council and the folks here and And all I'd really like to say is, was built on opportunity, achievement, and integrity. That was my high school principles. And I'm a little emotional because it's, I was, it was unplanned to speak tonight and even be here. I forgot it was the first Tuesday of the month here. But I feel it's important to reflect on the year I came in by transit. And you've got a good local bus system, and it's easy to figure out the schedule. It is more or less like a gear, a clockwork kind of a pattern in your community. It works for you. It's not what everybody would expect in other, coming from other communities because they've got different objectives. I don't mind the spatial concepts. I can work with that. I can, I can figure things out, how to get there. I know the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, and I know it's colder in the north and warmer at the equator. You know, so simple things can guide me well, and I can get around town. I enjoyed the monthly bus pass. The discount helps. I think the tickets are laughable, for me anyway, for others, it may work fine. I know grocery stores don't disappear. My study was in marketing management, so it's not all about food, but it is based in Department of Agriculture, all right, at the federal level. Got a four-year degree in Bachelor of Science in that area. Social sciences are strong with me, and amongst many other things, I've got several industries that I'm interested in: construction, food service, recreation, and there are others. I am well-studied, I can research pretty well, and I've been trying to get a nonprofit, I'll correct that and say, a charity aspect to what I do and everything, and so the homeless situation was of interest to me. I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Monica Walker. I live at 608 Martin Street, and I feel a little bit unprepared because I didn't think I was gonna make it here, so I don't have my notes with me. But guess what? I've lived in this community long enough. I moved here in 2003. In 2003, I can remember countless number of times that I sat in this audience and stood, sat or stood with Mama Netticode, Dorothy Brown, and so many of the organizers who represented our community, Old Ashboro. I am now the president of Gold Street Neighborhood Association. I'm a part of the Unified Neighborhood Council, which also includes the Bimbo Street Community, the Arlington Park Community, the Ashboro Square, and we have become unified in our voices. It is, we sat in a meeting on Thursday night with a developer who wants to come in and develop a retail property, and he talked about that in his efforts to develop that property or to give us a scale or model of a property, he said he had approached at least 11 grocers to find their interest in possibly locating in an area where we know we have a food desert. And he said that each of them, I mean, without even any deep explanation, almost of any kind, refused or failed to respond. And not, and I want to, I want to situate this because it actually belongs to this City Council, it belongs to the City of Greensboro. Our inability to be able to locate a grocer in this section of our community has everything to do with what this city has failed to do, and that is, it's longstanding underdevelopment of our community. And I name those communities because it's very important. We don't have a, our, the absence or the lack of a grocery store has nothing to do with the capacity of our ability to support such a structure. And when I think about what this city could do and the investment that it could make in helping to support, helping to explore, in fact, I've been told by friends who've gone on visits as a part of other cities, looking at the attracting of retail outlets to their communities, and I just don't see that commitment, that level of investment on the part of this City Council, on the part of this city's structure. We often come, I think we're so polite in the way that we ask, in the way that we have been willing to wait. We're not willing to wait any longer. So if you think that you're seeing us tonight is just, you know, you hear us and you dismiss us, we're not gonna be dismissed. And so our intent is to push and to show up until we've gotten what we need and that which we deserve, not something that you're just extending or giving. We are pushing for the very thing that we know we deserve and that we know that this city has the capacity to support us in making happen. So I'll be, you'll be seeing me again, and you'll be seeing so many of us that are present tonight because we're gonna continue to push until it happens. Thank you.
I was really hoping that I wouldn't be last. I didn't want to be first, I didn't want to be last. But my name, legal name is William King. People call me Brother Jeff. Now, I'm a retired firefighter. I have worked for this community all my life. I have worked with Ms. Hightower's husband, Alfonso, with the Transportation Department, so I have really truly been in this community. I want to talk to y'all about, we're gonna end up at homelessness, okay? But we're gonna start somewhere else. The worst thing about being a firefighter is when someone calls 911, the longest time in the, on the planet is from the time the call is placed to the time the person receives the help that they need. People say that that is eternity, which I can truly understand. I have seen many lives lost, I have seen many lives taken. I cannot tell y'all what I have seen in my lifetime. I don't want to. I wished I could forget it, but I can't. I retired, when I retired in 2019, I thought my public service was over, but it's not. I just changed gears. Now I serve the homeless community. Week after week, time after time, every Saturday, I'm there feeding the homeless. But the cool part about that is I don't only feed them with food, I feed them with a Bible study. Y'all, we have actually, the numbers that have increased over time is amazing to me. But I wanted to speak to y'all about a mentality. There's a mentality that I learned over the years of being a firefighter. It's one, you can either be a gunslinger or you can be a sharpshooter. A gunslinger is someone who shoots from the hip and hope they hit their target. A sharpshooter is more methodical, one who actually pays attention and does what needs to be done. If you truly want to see what works, I encourage you to actually visit the Hope Center on a Saturday morning, and y'all can actually see the people that we serve. You can interact with them, you can talk to them. They are amazing people. Y'all, I don't get paid for it. I do it for free. Because, see, I'm very passionate about people. I love people, and I even went to school and got three degrees so I can help people more. So I have never been in the City Council's chambers. This is my very first time. I cannot imagine doing y'all's job. Very difficult. I might go and, I have watched all of these people say what they were gonna say, and they were passionate about what they said. But truly, homelessness, we will probably never end it, but we can surely, surely make a great impact. I really, I'm honored to be here with y'all tonight, I promise you. I sat 10 foot away from Zach when he was eating last Friday. I was gonna say, hey, but I didn't want to mess this dinner up. But thank y'all, and I appreciate y'all for letting me be here tonight. Y'all be blessed.
And that is the last speaker from the floor that we have. We now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. Item I-1 and I-2 will be read together. I-1 is a resolution, spending authorization of opioid settlements for the City of Greensboro Opioid Settlement Fund Plan Fiscal Year 25. And I-2, an ordinance establishing a project fund for the Opioid Settlement Fund Program. I need a motion...
Second.
That is moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Ms. Abuziwaider for item I-1. And that passes eight to zero. I need a motion for I-2.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuziwaider. And that passes eight to zero. Now we move on to items four and five. Item I-1 is a resolution approving and authorizing the sale and issuance of limited obligation bonds and the execution and delivery of a master trust agreement, a first supplement trust agreement, a deed of trust, a security agreement and related documents in connection with the financing of various capital projects for the City of Greensboro, North Carolina. And item I-5, an ordinance in the amount of $10,083,942 providing appropriations for the 2025 limited obligation bond projects. I need a motion to adopt I-4.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. You skipped over item I-3. Do you want to go ahead and carry forward with four and five and go back to three?
I thought we did I-3. No? Well, I read four and fives, we'll do those. Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. And that passes eight to zero. I need a motion for I-5.
I have a question on I-5, please. This is, is this the $10 million out of the housing money? Or is this just, what is this, Larry?
No, this is specifically for some limited obligation bonds. This is not the geo-bonds that you've previously approved. So this is for fire station, some property acquisition, the parking deck, Bellmead Project. This is separate from your housing fund.
Okay.
Move the item. Second.
And that passes eight to zero. Now go back to I-3, an ordinance to amend Section 16-165 of the Greensboro Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuziwaider.
Mayor Vaughn, I'm not showing your vote or Councilmember Hightower.
I don't have a screen. And that passes eight to zero. Item I-6 is an ordinance in the amount of $6,176,467, amending the Debt Service Fund for debt refinancing. Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Hoffman. And that passes eight to zero, and that is the end of our agenda. Boards and Commissions, Ms. Pinder? Do you have any Boards and Commissions? Mrs. Thurm?
None this evening.
Mrs. Abuziwaider? Mrs. Hoffman? Mr. Metheny? Mr. Holston? Mrs. Hightower? Council comments? Mrs. Hightower?
After listening to the speakers tonight, I just want to make sure, Mrs. City Attorney, that the, there are no more segregation policies or ordinances in our books, period.
There are no what?
Segregation ordinances and policies. They've all been removed. Can you please follow up, make sure...
We wanted to do research to make sure that all the language has been corrected. I know there's deeds in the records and stuff like that that have, and we actually were looking at doing edits of some of the pro bono activity, but none are being enforced.
Right, but if they're still there, there would be a possibility to have some of that.
I get your point.
Written into that.
I know...
If they're not there, I just need to make sure they're, they're no longer there to create barriers in neighborhoods.
We will look for that specifically starting tomorrow.
So the City Attorney and I had this conversation a couple of years ago, and I know that there was an intern who I think was working on and looking up, and my understanding was that our ordinances have been scrubbed, that they are where they need to be, but deeds, private deeds may still have that language in it, but that would be superseded by law, and that we didn't really have the ability to go back in and change everybody's deeds. That was the answer that I got a few years ago.
It would take work to obtain, to make those changes, but you have a better memory than I do, and we did have that conversation, and we did look through it. You're right.
But now, I understand if it's private, but when those deeds, if we were to provide down payment assistance to someone who bought in that area and that deed contained that, would we not have the ability to re-strike that language? Because no city dollars should support... support any such language. So, I know this.
I don't think it would be any, any modern deeds, but it might be in historic deeds that are still the current deeds on the property.
Right. I just want to make sure that that's no longer an issue and a barrier that we need to, that we're concerned about. That people should be able to live wherever they choose to live and not be relegated to one area. So, I just think if you would follow up on that, I'd appreciate it. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For that. I would like to ask Larry about the housing bond money. That's the reason I asked about the other obligation bond. Where are we in the scheme of looking at how those dollars will be utilized? Have we determined yet? And I do not want them to go the path of the last money. I don't support that because it went and set, and I don't know how beneficial it became. I still don't. Because I don't have a report from you, Mr. City Attorney. I don't know if you've heard from anyone on it. You know, we talked about it, uh, last year, year before, when that $5 million went. And then it kind of, we didn't know how it was being dispersed.
No, we have had a report on that.
You, when?
Um, shortly after you asked about it.
Yeah, but that's been how long?
It, you, you remember when you asked. Exactly. I haven't got anything more recent than that.
Right, that part. So, can we follow up on that? Okay.
Absolutely.
Sorry, that, you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. Now, Larry, back to you.
Uh, let me, if I can, let me get with Nasha, and we'll put together an, an update for you on the next allocation of housing bond funds and where they're, where they're proposed to be used and how they'll be, how they'll be used.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing, I have two more things. I heard a lot tonight about grocery stores and, you know, we haven't, we failed to not bring grocery stores. I know I personally have had multiple conversations, even when Publix first came here, or was trying to come here to say we need that. Because I live in that food desert, too. So, it, it also affects me. I, I also drive 16 miles round trip to a grocery store that has better food than a convenience store. But convenience stores keep popping up. And I, I'd like to look at some of our zoning regulations on how some of that can be looked at, how we would control some of that. Because dollar stores, Dollar Generals, convenience stores, um, I've got, I have diabetes, so I would like to eat fresher as opposed to going to a convenience store, which I don't go anyway, but nevertheless. So, um, I, I'd like for us to really be concerned about that. And so, I know we had that conversation with retail strategy. Where are we at with them and implementing things? When we have, we take so long to get this stuff implemented. And if we can provide an incentive way to encourage these retailers to bring better options, whether it's a Panera Bread or something that is Chipotle, something that offers something that really does improve your quality of life so that we can live 15 years, like, longer than the other side of town. Where are we with that retail strategy?
I know they're in the, in their process of evaluation, and we'll get you an update in the next couple of days as it relates to where we are on our timeline. And then also to go back to your question about zoning, as part of our, our strategy to approach the housing, we are looking at some of our zoning. So, I'll definitely spoke, speak with our folks there and planning to add that to our list of, of what we're looking at to address and, and evaluate what we can do to ensure we are getting the right type of even commercial properties in our community. So, thank you.
Because the saturation issue is a problem. When we get saturated on one type in one area, that is a problem. And it does impact what businesses do look at coming to us. Everybody needs somewhere to live. So, we have to be cognizant of that. Everybody needs somewhere to stay, that they can attain that place to stay for their pocket. But they also need to make sure they live in areas where they can walk to grocery stores and drugstores and healthcare places as well. So, I, I really am concerned about some of the zoning, how things are. And I know legally sometime, Mr. City Attorney, will tell me certain things. But I think we just got to start to look at how we can really have that discussion in those areas. So, I appreciate an update on that. And finally, I would like to congratulate the Reverend Dr. Curtis H. Brown, who is the pastor of New Light Missionary Baptist Church, 1105 Willa Road, celebrating 50 years of pastoral ministry at New Light. He's been in the ministry for well over, almost 65 years. But he has been 50 years at New Light, right there. And he's made a significant impact. And Sunday morning, with council's approval, I did present him with a key to the city for the many doors of opportunity that he has opened for people in our community and that he will continue to do as long as he is the pastor in this city. He has done a lot of great things, and I would like to applaud and appreciate him for all the great work that he has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we all did hear from our speakers tonight. A lot of the comments were regarding deserts, whether it's the health desert or the food desert and other deserts. We also heard about some concentrations of housing in, in our communities. And it is going to be important, I'll take the concentrations first, that, that we do share the wealth in our community when it comes to densities, when it comes to the types of, uh, uh, projects that are going about. It's not always going to be easy. We all know that there are land values and cost and other things that are associated with it. But we do have to keep an eye on concentrations and making sure that, that we don't overly concentrate and overly burden any one community with one type or another. Diversity is a strength, and that also extends into our housing. I also want to talk about, and, and this is for, Mr. City Manager and, and City Attorney, when it comes to the investment of those organizations that, that we're encouraging to come to our community, that provide those jobs that are so much needed for those folks who are already here and those folks who are in school when they graduate. Um, I don't know the law. I, I know that we provide tax incentives for them. But are there, are there any other types of incentives, encouragements or plans that, that can be developed that provide for things such as, as housing? You know, we have Toyota, very happy to have them bringing in 6,000 folks to our community. Well, those 6,000 folks that they live in Greensboro, they're going to cause us a challenge in already tight market. Are there any types of, of, um, plans, incentives that can be developed that encourage them to, in addition to the property taxes, but also contribute to a fund? I don't want to break a law. I don't, I don't look good in orange. But whatever it, whatever it comes down to, and also extend that into the, into the food deserts, into the medical deserts, uh, so that we can provide for the folks who are here and for the folks that we want to come to our community. And, and that's just a, a topic off the top coming from the conversations that we had, um, or that we heard this evening. Um, that'll also help us on our road to 10,000. Uh, we, we heard that from the City Manager at our retreat. It's a serious number. Uh, we may have to look at it down the road, but it's a great start. We have a target. We have a goal. We talked about that, uh, having a goal and then having milestones along the way so that, so that we know how we're doing, so that our community knows how we're doing, how we're projecting what our needs are, and then how are we tracking towards that. And then finally, I want to say condolences again to the families of Joyce Johnson on the passing of Reverend Nelson Johnson, and also to the family of Mike Borchers, uh, Mike and his family. Uh, several council members attended the homegoing services for both, and they're in our hearts. For Mike's wife, not for Mike. Uh, in our hearts and, and, and minds and our, our condolences are with the families. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Metheny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we've got a lot of responsibility as we sit up here. And we've got a lot of responsibility not only for the individual districts that we represent, but of the entire community. We've got a lot of responsibility for putting differences aside and working together as a group. Um, and sometimes that gets challenged. And then, you know, I hear what Ms. Black said, that she was disappointed in me taking up for myself. But when you're constantly getting called wise and you got an opportunity to take up for yourself, it was my opportunity, and it was my time to take up for myself. Um, there's no place in this world for the hatred that you saw walk out of here. We don't need it. You want grocery stores? How about this? How about we work with the neighborhood to get a petition of all the households that live in the neighborhood that would supply, uh, you know, and work with grocery stores? Let's start a petition on that. Let's get, let's get together. Let's don't kick each other out of, of needings. Let's don't come up here and just throw shade on any individual council or collective council. Um, let's, let's, you want to stop the BS, let's stop it and let's work together. You know? We write a resolution. We go to the county to write a resolution. We get the neighborhoods to do a petition, and we beat on every door until somebody says yes. Matter of fact, I wasn't sitting on council, but this council did give an incentive for a Piggly Wiggly to come. And, you know, we're still waiting on it. So, this council is not opposed to putting its money where its mouth is. Can we do more? Okay. What is that more? A, a speaker said, um, there's a lot of things we could be doing. Okay, tell us what you want us to do with, I mean, within reason. Let's work together. Coming up here and just calling us, or in my case, calling me names, I don't know how, if I, if I was a grocery store and I'm watching a city council meeting and in a neighborhood that I want to invest in, that's going to do the opposite. So, you know, uh, and then you look at life, what you, Holston, Councilman Holston, just said, and the loss of life. I had looked at with a buddy of mine today that a year ago had, you know, an emergency bypass because he had a heart attack. And what we deal with up here, the gentleman, the fireman, um, what he's seen, uh, and what our police officers seen and the first responders. I mean, we have a heavy job. It's an importantly heavy job. And we do it for the best interest of everyone. And I, my hope, and I doubt it'll ever happen, I, I was looking at past emails, and it's interesting how, one of the emails I looked at was from April 9, 2020, my wife passed away, April 8 to 2020, and Mr. Robert sent me a Facebook note that says, please accept my sincerest condolences. It came to my house a year later on my wife's memorial. It stands up here and spews lies. Take the gloves off. Put the gun down. Let's work together. And so, Ms. Black, I had just had it tonight, and it was my time. I want to defend myself like I defend this city. And I do look forward to working with you. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Um, I had just a couple of things. Uh, the local government commission, of which I'm a member, met this afternoon in Raleigh, and our $23 million in, um, limited obligation bonds were passed by the, the LGC this afternoon. So, those will finance, those dollars will finance the Bellmead demolition and also the new fire department and a couple of other things, I think. So, that was good news. Um, you know, a long time ago, I, I worked for, um, in marketing and strategic planning for one of the, one of the largest owners and development, developers of, um, department stores, but also two major specialty stores, Brooks Brothers and, and Ann Taylor. Um, you know, we, we had very specific guidelines when we were looking at potential new locations for those. Back in those days, the, the radius that we looked at for a department store was seven, seven miles. I, I think I, I just looked it up, and I, I know a little bit about supermarket business because I, I, I worked a lot in that area when I was active in my consulting and executive recruitment practice. But, um, I think the average radius driving distance to a, a grocery store now in the U.S., according to the USDA, is, is about four miles. Um, so, you know, I, I just think we have to keep those things in mind. It doesn't mean that we can't, um, you know, look at maybe other possibilities that we haven't, that we haven't explored at this point. I just sent an idea to our City Manager to, uh, to take a look at, to just something that I remembered from somewhere else. But at any rate, I, I, it's important to hear from everyone. Uh, we, we certainly made an effort on Phillips Avenue a few years ago with the co-op there, uh, which unfortunately did not, um, did not, you know, survive. But at any rate, it's good to hear from everyone tonight, and we have a lot of food for thought. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also want to, I was going to touch on the, the co-op. I think, I think, you know, so many times we have come together, whether it was on the landfill issue, or, you know, or whether it was bringing the co-op, which unfortunately, as we all know, did not, uh, did not work very well. But, you know, we, we tried it, and we tried it for several years. Um, we do need a grocery store in East Greensboro in exactly the areas that were mentioned. Um, I, I do become concerned when it becomes an attack, though. When, and it's true. I've heard from many businesses, they do watch our council meetings, and they especially watch when we have speakers from the floor. And some of the comments I've heard from some businesses that, actually, some people have reached out and said, I've got this business, would you talk to them? And, you know, I say, well, I need to bring it to, to the council and see, you know, our economic development and all that. And then they watch a couple of council meetings, and I actually had one call me back and said, thank you, but we're, we're not interested now. And I said, well, what is the reason? And they, they wouldn't really say it, but they did say, well, we've watched enough council meetings. And, and I have the fear that if we want to bring more and more businesses here, and we want to be able to raise the median incomes for all of our areas, that we do need to have the decorum and that they are taxed. We want to, to work together. And I think Zach said it perfectly on that. We can all work together. We've done it before. We can do it again. Do things take way too much time sometimes? Yes. Yes. And I know, for instance, I know Ms. Hightower's been waiting on some sidewalks in a certain area for over 25 years. I know there's some other places that have been waiting for things for 15, 20 years. But if we can work together and show the world, the community, that we want to work together to solve this problem, to get that grocery store here, I, I guarantee, because I'll never forget, we've had some meetings over the years, and I don't know if anybody was there, I can't remember who was on council or whatever, but Keith Holliday stood up in a, it was a program about where can Greensboro grow. And what did he say? He said, we are only going to grow east. That's what we need. We need to put people and homes in the east because we can't grow much more on the west. We can't grow much more on the north. The south, a little bit, but most of it was growing east. So, that's why I know that most of us have been a proponent, and I know Mrs. Hightower especially, and Dr. Wells. We want to see more attainable housing. We need all levels of housing. So, that's what we've been trying to do. Have we been completely successful? Probably not, but we are trying. And I just wanted to say that, to say that we have been trying together. Um, is it always visible? No. It's not always visible. Maybe we should talk about, a little more about the things that we do in order to try to get some good businesses here and some good housing here. So, I'll go on my little list on a few things that have gone on. Um, let's see, on February 22nd, we had the, the homicide memorial at Bennett College. I know several people. On February twenty-second, we had the, the homicide memorial at Bennett College. I know several people were here, several council members as well. Uh, that was put on by the Mother's Standing Against Gun Violence and our victim's advocate office, uh, led by Mary Nero. I know a lot of the officers were there. Chief was there. Uh, much of the City Manager and his office were there. So, um, that was very, very touching in that we light a candle and read every single homicide victim from last year. And there were, I believe, forty-one from last year. We hope that goes down. Um, on February twenty-sixth, there was the, uh, Public Safety International Civil Rights Center and Museum Panel for Black History Month. That was very informative. Um, Tammy Thurman and I, Mrs. Thurman and I, were at One Step Further, the Community Sustainability, the, uh, program that feeds families that are in need over Almerick Drive. And I think they said, don't they say over six hundred? Over six hundred families per month that they are helping supply. And it is open three days a week. And as far as I know, it's open to anyone who needs food. So, uh, I don't have the days that it's open, but it is very helpful. Um, beyond that, um, I just want to say for those who are following and fasting during Ramadan, uh, Ramadan Kareem. And, um, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Thur?
Um, yeah, I just had one, I have a question. We heard tonight about the concentration of low-income housing tax credits in certain areas, uh, in certain zip codes. I believe that you have to be in select census tracts in order to qualify for that tax credit. And it's not a matter of, we need tax credits in 27410. It's that 27410 doesn't qualify to get those. Is that correct?
I know ACM McCray was looking into that and we're also working, yeah.
Cindy just got up to behind you to, to address that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
There's no limitation on where the tax credits can go. However, certain census tracts can, can qualify for basis boosts, which increases the amount of tax credit equity that can go into a project. So there are certain areas in the city where developers can actually get more assistance, um, because of the qualities of the neighborhood.
Thank you for that clarification. That leads me to then what I think we might want to, uh, approach on our legislative agenda when we turn in the final legislative agenda, is that the state is, is actually then perpetuating the concentration of low-income housing all in certain areas and not, because that's what they're incentivizing. So perhaps we can ask the state to look at broadening those rules so that we aren't incentivizing that concentration of poverty. Um, so that, that was question one. I'd just like us to look into that and see what our options are for encouraging the state to branch out because I certainly understand why developers focus on, focus on certain areas if that's where they can get the most help and the most tax incentive. Um, last week I was down in Raleigh for the, uh, Leagues meeting and, um, dinner. I will comment that one of the hot topics was, um, cities looking very closely at all their grants and all their fundings, funding sources and identifying the risk associated with federal grants, whether it be their voucher programs and, you know, their Department of Transportation, even programs that they have working with universities because the universities are losing funding on some of their grants, which would then roll downhill to us. And I talked to, um, Deputy City Manager Chris Wilson about that and requested that we get such an analysis. Um, I think it's really important as we go into the next budget year to take a hard look at where we have risk in terms of that, those future funding sources. Um, also, I had spoken with, um, the City Manager's office about identifying ways that we could create incentives for housing and repurposing empty office buildings, big box stores, that kind of thing, and what kind of incentives there were. I was thinking that we needed some, um, legislative changes. But if I understand Attorney Watts's information, um, back to me, if there is an affordable housing component in reserve and it's a public good, then we can create such incentives. And we have the ability to do that without any changing at the state level. So I look forward to hearing some proposals on that the Planning Department or whoever, um, could put together for us to look at some of the empty buildings that we have around the city, especially the large buildings that, um, are either strip malls or empty big box buildings or empty office buildings. Um, and what kind of incentives we can put together to, um, encourage the conversion to housing. I know it's an expensive proposition a lot of times and I think perhaps if we had incentives that we could use, um, that would help us branch out. There are empty buildings in every district in Greensboro. Um, and I think that's something that we can use that will also help us get towards our ten thousand homes. Um, I think that's it for me tonight.
Ms. Pender?
Yes, just a couple of comments. Um, as I was listening to everyone this evening speak, it just made me think of last week. I had the honor of attending, um, the Carolina Theater where they showed a screening of the Warrensville Chronicles and, which is the first heritage neighborhood. And when you think about the elements of a healthy neighborhood, going back, you know, a hundred sixty years of fostering triumph, endurance, hope, strength and faith, it just makes me think of many of the, um, speakers tonight, how they, really what they're asking for is like the vital conditions of health and wellbeing and what does it look like and what does it take. So I'd be interested in seeing that retail strategy to really look at that and how we can collectively work together and find, maybe not this way or that way, but find another way where we can address food and other amenities in the, in the community. Because when you look at the concentration of health disparities, especially in the east, a lot of it is attributed to health. It's attributed to food. But I believe there are other ways and different ways that we can look and how we can address that, within reason, of course. But it just goes to show that we are a resilient community and there's ways that we can continue to look at how we can work together to help solve some of these. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, one quick thing. Um, because I ran in from a funeral. So, um, I wanted to give my condolences to the Bishara family. Many of you, uh, know of Jack's Deli and Wall Street Deli. The patriarch, um, Issa Bishara passed away over the weekend. Uh, I have to say, he gave a valiant battle. He was well into his eighties and had actually beat pancreatic cancer and liver cancer both at the same time for many years. So, um, while it was very sad that he passed away, it had, it had just come back, but several years ago, even in his age, he had, he had the, the, I guess, uh, will to live and for his children and grandchildren. So he did. But I do want to give condolences to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just two brief things. Um, ACC Basketball is back in the city of Greensboro. We are hosting the women's tournament. It will be the, um, first time that a tournament has been in Greensboro where they've had this extended field of teams. So you may see people in our community who have never been to Greensboro before because they're, they're new to the ACC Conference. And, um, one thing that Greensboro does really well is fans first. And, um, we know that they will have a great time while they're here and that the Coliseum is really second to none when it comes to putting on a show. Um, so I, I look forward to the, um, women's basketball over the next couple of days and we'll get some great TV time, which is really, um, invaluable to get our name in, on TV sets across the country and sometimes beyond. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention is the State of the City is Thursday, March twentieth from four to six at Piedmont Hall. I think council has, um, has done their part already. Um, Carla does a great job putting the State of the City together. I would encourage everybody to come out and see it. We did change the format a little bit. Um, you know, we felt the last ones have gone, were on just a little too long. We dropped the panel. Um, but I think it is going to be, um, information-packed and I think you'll leave feeling really good about the city of Greensboro and where we're headed. Um, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have, uh, one thing to mention and that's tonight we have, uh, Judge Laura Cabbage who's joined us. And as you know, she'll be joining our office and, uh, we're excited to have her.
Welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.